Good morning, and thank you for joining us this morning for our City Council Study Session. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the role?
Right.
Here.
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 Ma'am Steele?
Here.
Yes, here.
Stevens?
Here.
Flatt?
Here. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Two is Pocatello Regional Airport Commission Update. Representatives from the Pocatello Regional Airport Commission will be in attendance to discuss the commission's goals and projects as well as council's policies and expectations.
Do I need to bring this microphone any closer? It's good.
Just gotta use it. Talk to it.
So I don't need to move any closer?
You're good.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to, first of all, introduce myself. I am Kristin Jensen, and I serve on the Pocatello Regional Airport Commission, and I was asked this morning to fill in for Michelle Paletti, who is our Chairwoman, and she was unable to attend because of a work commitment this morning, but she would have liked to have been here to present this information to you. I would also like to introduce Larry Bell. Larry Bell also serves on our commission, and we also have our airport manager here with us, Alan Evans, and his assistant, Christie Heinz. I would also like to thank members of the City Council and your mayor, who give us support and guidance, and we appreciate your dedication and commitment to helping our airport be successful. I'd also like to thank Rick Cheatham. He is also a member of our airport commission, and when he attends the meetings, it is very nice to have his wealth of knowledge and his guidance and support. I would like to go over and review some of our goals and projects, and there's three different categories those fall into. One is airport improvement projects. The second one is land development, and the third is airport support. So, under the airport improvement projects, recent projects completed include installation of a new ATC tower beacon, upgrading the power supply for the airfield electrical vault. We've purchased a new piece of snow removal equipment, and we have rehabilitated portions of taxiway A, and also the aircraft parking ramps. We have also updated the aircraft rescue firefighting system, and we have also acquired the aircraft rescue firefighting system foam testing equipment. The next thing we have done is we are starting to participate in a master plan to update and determine the immediate, near, and long-term airfield needs and projects. An updated pavement management plan will also be included in part of this master plan. The Bureau of Land Management base expansion has been bid, and work will begin this spring on that project, and we're looking forward to that because they'll be able to operate two DC-10s, whereas right now, they just have room for one. The next section is land development. The AV Center is currently building a large hangar which will be able to accommodate large jets, and there continues to be interest from others in building hangars at the airport also. Morton Buildings, a brand-new company back from, they originate in Illinois, they will begin construction on their facility in spring, I think just in the next couple of months, and so that's a very exciting project for us. The main goal of the commission this coming year is to review and establish a rental rate structure for non-aviation property, and we're also working on setting rates that are equitable and competitive, which is not an easy thing right now. We recently spent some funds to be able to have an, having a hard time wording that, an appraisal, yes, an appraisal done, and with all the changing economics that we have right now, that was a challenge for the people involved in that, and appreciate all the work that they went to, and that the commissions will be going forward, working on that project, to have that be equitable and competitive. The commission will also continue to review leases and developments and provide recommendations to the council. Under the category of airport support, the commission works to support the airport, as it is a valuable asset to the community, providing over $184 million in annual economic impact, which is necessary for the growth and development of the region. So, I will conclude my comments, and I will turn the time over now to our airport manager, Alan Evans. If you have any questions, you can direct those toward him. Thank you.
Good way to get out of questions right there.
Since I'm unpaid, I will go back to this chair.
Any questions?
Questions? We got one down here?
Yeah. Sure. So, Alan, I'm recalling, gosh, I don't remember, last year sometime, when you did an update, and part of that update was the economic impact. You had a chart that showed economic impact. It was you, or perhaps it was a consultant. I don't remember.
State Aeronautics, I believe, is the form that you're referring.
Okay, okay. And at that time, I ask what, for further clarification on, you know, what statistics we have indicating the 180 million-plus of economic impact, and if memory serves, they told me that that was sort of a state formula. And so, I mean, I keep hearing this $180 million of local economic impact, and I still am not, don't feel as though I've gotten, you know, any kind of detailed information about how do we arrive at that, what does that look like right here in Pocatello, et cetera.
It's a very, very good question, and we were not actually, we were included in this as far as giving them the information that they needed to put this together. I am not exactly sure what, how that formula was put together by the company that did it for the state. I know that we were listed as the second-largest impact airport in the state. Boise was number one, we were number two. I guess what I could say to that is, as we turned those numbers in, we looked at all of the businesses at the airport, what they did. You know, you're talking McNab-Graham, the number of employees that they have, and it's not just necessarily the ones at the airport, it's in their system. Petersons, and those impacts as they go out, and as those dollars roll through our community as well as the state. So, I could reach out to them and find out a little bit more about exactly how they got this number. I don't know how that number came about to a T, but...
I believe the Aeronautics Division probably has it on their website, and they had, all the way through the process, their consultant had some really good information about how they, there's multiplying factors, there's trickle-down dollars, there's a lot of information there. But I will check and make sure that it's still on their website. We can certainly send the council the link to that, and then you can read straight from the consultant.
Yeah.
And we'll get it.
It's ITD.gov.
Yeah. If it's not on there, I think we have an electronic copy of the full study, and that would explain it.
That might explain it better, yes.
And, you know, because it's, we so frequently hear these numbers, not just relative to the airport, but in government, we hear these numbers tossed around, and, and, yep, you know, the general citizenry and I say, "Okay, but tell me what that looks like in our town." You know, so even a formula is important, because it tells you how the number was achieved that's being tossed about, but it does not answer the question of, "Show me what that looks like right here in Pocatello." And that, I think, is increasingly, as, you know, our single flight is canceled due to weather and et cetera, and people be, the passenger side of the situation, people become more and more disillusioned and unable to rely on starting a trip here. I think it's important to, for folks in Pocatello to understand, as you've so frequently said, "Well, there are lots of other ramifications." Great.
Yes.
What are those? Because, you know, frankly, the word on the street is, "What good is it?" And I, you know, I understand, because you've been in front of us explaining that, and doing a great job of that, but person on the street doesn't understand that. And so, that's why I would really like some information. I think the public would appreciate some very clear information about what are the companies in Pocatello, what is the impact, you know, et cetera, et cetera, rather than just a formulaic-generated number. So, whatever can be done in that regard, I would certainly appreciate. Thank you.
Good luck with that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Roger.
I noticed that we were talking about businesses expanding. There was no mention of Frigitech. What's going on out there?
I'm really not at liberty right now to make too many comments on that. That is still alive. We are still working through some things with them. I think I can say that. We should have an answer here relatively soon as to whether they're going to move forward or not, and so...
So, it's kind of stalled out right now?
Well, you know, not to say too much about it, because I don't know a lot about it, but I do know that the COVID situation kind of set them back in their funding, and I think there's some things that they have had to reestablish in order to move forward.
Have we done any, what I would say, exploration of their credibility? Because I'm starting to hear that they've done this in other places, started with Great Fanfare, and then pulled out.
I have not, personally. The airport holds a lease, but, you know, that's what we have.
Are they current on the lease?
What's that? They are current on the lease at this time, yes. That's correct.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for being here with us. Thanks, Larry.
Thank you.
Kristin, thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll move to Agenda Item Three is Pocatello Development Authority Update. Representatives from Pocatello Development Authority, PDA, will be in attendance to discuss the PDA's goals and projects, as well as council's policies and expectations.
Good morning.
Good morning, members of the council.
Good morning.
Good morning to city staff.
Good morning.
I'd like to first start by, number one, congratulating you, Josh, on joining the City Council, and you, Rick, for now becoming part of the PDA Board, so we have some expectations to listen to your contributions, as well as some of the insights you might be able to share. So, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I think it would be also fair to introduce to my right Scott Turner, who serves as the Vice Chairman of the PDA, and of course, everyone knows Brent McLean. And at this juncture, Mr. Mayor, if we could, we'd just like to forward to you, as reference, the executive summary that's provided and been prepared by Brent and members of the staff. In the course of the last year, since I was last before you, one of the elements of concern that we had as a board was that we needed more insight to members, and insight being reference points to how it is and what it is that the PDA really should be functioning as, more on the technical aspect than anything else. And so, to that end, about two and a half months ago, we went through the process of a lecture series where the type of PDA contributions made by the voluntary members of this board were, in many sense, displayed as an opportunity to learn and to educate ourselves. I think we had a very successful effort. All members participated, and I think the realization was that that educational aspect of the PDA had been some time in the making, and we accelerated it simply because we needed to make sure that the PDA Board members understood with a lot more clarity what it is their commitment was to the city and to the board. Brent, anything you'd like to add to that?
No, I think you covered that very well. We did review state statute. We had our attorney present and gave us presentation on, you know, what kind of role and things that we are allowed to do in accordance with state statute, just to make sure we're going in the right direction. And so, it was very, very productive and helpful.
And I think the, yeah, Roger.
I understand that you, that the attorney is kind of a new term, and that they're external from the city. Is that right?
That is correct.
And so, they bring in, I'm not going to say more objective, I don't want to denigrate anybody, but they bring in a professional awareness that's larger than our city, and that awareness can be very helpful to you, understanding the boundaries and function of the PDA. Is that appropriate?
Yeah, I would say that is, yeah.
If I may, Roger, thank you for that observation, and I think that, you know, we certainly don't want to ever be in a position where we become the guys that are pounding our chest about it, but you recognizing now that bringing in that external expertise really embraces what we're trying to do as an agency, and what it is we're trying to bring as a skill set to the board members. At the end of the day, as I said earlier, these are volunteers that do take their time with their insight and their expertise, but I think the technical aspect of what the authority should and could do is something that I believe Megan and team, as far as the law firm is concerned, brought to the table. So, thank you for that observation. As I handed out earlier to you, which probably was not fair to all of you as it relates to the observations of what our current districts reflect, we did cite our Naval Ordinance, North Portnoy Regional Airport and North Gate Districts. To the right of page two, actually, it would be page three, the tax increment values cited for 2021 are there for your consideration. It's not an excuse, but reality provides that if, as I asked Brent last week, I said, you know, "Where's more current number on those values so that we can facilitate that to the council?" Our challenge has been, I don't think we've had a treasurer for, I don't know how many months, and that's not an excuse, that's just reality. So, those are the foremost numbers we've had that have been provided to us by our former treasurer.
Yeah. And these numbers were end of fiscal year 2021, and the amount spent out from the PDA since that time has not been any significant amounts, and so they're fairly accurate. But, as David has indicated, we don't have a treasurer currently, and so it does make it difficult to bring some of these financial statements forward. So, we're working on that.
When we say tax increment value, we're talking the increment you are being paid as PDA on the district versus what would be coming in lieu of taxes, or as taxes to the city.
Yeah, so there's the base level that's already been pre-established that the city is getting, and the increment is the additional tax base that has been generated since the district was formed that the PDA utilizes for economic development.
Scott, you were going to add to that?
Yeah, the increment that we see today, we're hoping that the investment will gain over time, and that increment will increase. Excuse me. When a TIF originates, there is a baseline tax, which is inclusive and comes into the city for all of the purposes that it should for the tax. The increment is set aside for future investment to increase the value of the property through the bringing in of business, the helping of existing business, and hopefully, what it will do is, over that time till, you'll notice like the Naval Ordinance until 2030. So, we have another eight years of value. The IRG, for example, the company that bought the Naval Ordinance plant, has some long-term plans, and as they develop that, then that increment value annually will jump, will go up. That's what we foresee.
Is it, and this is a, is it possible, because you see great potential, like, and I'll use the IRT, is it possible to close a district and then create a new one right behind that? In other words, the Naval Ordinance plant has been treading water for a while.
Yes.
If you've got new investors, is it possible to just close it out and then come back with a project that would recreate a TIF district within a couple of years, and because you're looking at potential for it and things like that, I don't know.
We could, but it would be literally a reset back to ground zero on developing a TIF. We can't, for instance, revise a TIF. That's not allowed. We would have to go back to and have a study, and yes, we can. We could do that.
I know you can expand them sometimes, too, but that's something else. But, you know, I just know that we're kind of locked into value there, and unless somebody really invests, it doesn't take the increment very high. And sometimes, it might be best to zero out and start over, because it's incentivizing, you can create new things, because some of the increment, in fact, a lot of the increment for one of these particularly, is pretty much committed to pay off stuff.
Yeah.
You know, and it's an increment that is locked in, but others can create the room for reinvestment, to get rid of the blight, to just create an improvement, and it takes it to a new level. And I was just wondering if that was a possibility.
Is it, go ahead, Dave. Okay. One thing to note, too, though, specifically like the Naval Ordinance, that is probably the district that creates the most increment for the PDA, and it has just over 200,000 every year that comes in as increment for the PDA to utilize. If you close that out and start over, that base then jumps back up, and your increment is zero. And so...
Unless you've got an $8 million building that goes in there, or something like that.
Yes.
You know what I'm saying, a reinvestment.
But what I'm trying to point out is, closing it early is our goal. We want to close them as soon as we can, but we also want to achieve the purpose of why that TIF was established. And so, if you close them too soon, you're starting all over, and it takes, you know, three, four, five years for increment to actually start generating. As we can see, even with the North Gate District, that increment is just barely starting to go, and it's taken a while. And so, where you have an investor like IRG, they purchase properties that have, within these TIF districts, understanding that there is an incentive to help with public infrastructure and things that they would benefit from, that the community benefits from as well, and that money is there and ready to go. And so, I think the biggest thing is that we want to make sure the TIFs are successful and that they achieve their goal. And that Naval Ordinance plant, for example, is really on that precipice of exploding, and you don't see the impact of a TIF district until the end of it. That's really where you start to see what you were trying to achieve happen, and we're going to see that happen.
Pocatello has a history of overperforming their TIF districts and retiring them early.
Right. The Yellowstone, North Yellowstone District, for instance, was a huge success for Pocatello. And I just wanted to add one thing. A TIF district also, in an odd sort of way, works as a marketing tool, because it attracts other businesses that look at it, and they see the advantage of working in partnership with the city. Ultimately, though, the advantages, and what we're stressing to do is increase the value to the public and to the city. That's ultimately our goal. It's, if we can assist the business in coming in, the end result, or the end game, is that they're going to come in and do something for the benefit of Pocatello.
Perfect scenario, is you create a whole bunch of jobs there.
Yes.
And it goes out and turns into residential and secondary businesses.
Yes.
Somewhere else.
And I think it's worth mentioning, Councilman, that to Scott and Brent's point about attracting additional business opportunities, the scenario that is set when you have an entity like IRG come and participate in this TIF in the city of Pocatello, it sends out a very distinct signal to other major enterprises that recognize that if someone like IRG can come into town and present an opportunity that we all agree with, then it's incumbent upon them to look for that opportunity as well, simply because they've established a beachhead, so to speak. So, it has a very positive impact from both a marketing standpoint and recognition of opportunity that the city presents. So, thank you for bringing up that point. Any other questions we might be able to entertain?
Chris?
So, this is just sort of an elementary question, but it's a question that is frequently asked just by the general public, and that is, what dollars does the city have, the city have invested in each of these TIF districts, and what portion of that tax investment, taxpayer investment, has been paid back to date? So, just kind of bottom line, where the heck are we?
Brent, you want to tackle that?
I don't have exact numbers for you. We can look and see what kind of expenditures have been made in each district using the funds. We can absolutely generate some sort of report, and so I can look into that, and that would be just fine.
I think that would be really helpful to the public, because, you know, all these, all this verbiage and all these numbers, again, get thrown around, and to the taxpayer, the bottom line is, "How much of my tax money went into each TIF district, and how much of my money has been paid back?"
Well, and one thing to be clear on is, the money that a TIF district collects is only the tax money from those properties within that TIF.
The increment, I understand that.
And so, it's not the community as a whole that is contributing to it.
Yeah, yeah. No, I understand that. I understand that. But it's, you know, from my perspective, that's a fair question from the public.
Also, keep in mind that we only reimburse.
Yeah.
We only reimburse after receiving receipt of work completed, and we only reimburse if the city staff, the engineering staff, whoever's involved, says the work was done appropriately under code. And if that doesn't happen, then we don't reimburse. So, I just wanted, you know, everyone to understand that, that...
Right, there are checks and balances in place.
Right. We don't send, we don't send money to them.
Yeah, yeah.
They come and ask for it based on the work done following the guidance of the TIF, what's written in the TIF.
Right, no, no, I understand that, and I think that my question on behalf of the public is specifically city money, which of course isn't city money, it's taxpayer money, because the city doesn't have any money of its own. And so, that's, for the person on the street, that's the question. You know, "How much did that cost me, and how much of that has been paid back?" I mean, it's an elemental, but I think fundamentally fair.
But I also want to reiterate that it's not the taxpayers throughout the whole city that are contributing to the TIF districts. And so, the clarity is, you know, the everyday citizen, "How much did that cost me?" They're not, their tax dollars in general are going to the city, not to the district.
No, but...
I would challenge that, Brett, because I've done a lot of reading about special tax districts, not just TIF districts, but they can have a very detrimental effect on what taxpayers are paying outside of those zones. Every time there is a special dispensation that gives somebody a tax break, it's a shift in taxes, because somebody else has to pick up the bill. For example, North Gate, we're getting, we got $4,195. I don't know if that pays for our sweeping and our...
Snow plowing.
Snow plowing and everything else up there. So, outside the district, taxpayers are paying for that so that it can perform. And so, it's all locked in. It's an interlocked thing, and I understand the isolation of the funds that are invested in the district and how they turn over and stuff like that, but there's an outside investment that the taxpayers do as well, and it takes a while for those outside investments to be recouped.
Yes.
And, for example, I know the new lift station helped all of Highland, and it supports further development, not just in North Gate. further development, not just in North Gate. But very recently, it was confirmed to me by, you know, an employee who should know, that, you know, that one of the reasons for upgrading that lift station was to support North Gate. And so, you know, that's, those are the kinds of, I think, legitimate expenses, increased snow plowing, increased police presence, you know, increased animal control, garbage, you know, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And those are often overlooked. And not intentionally or on any, but, but those are the kinds of things that the people, people on the street, average citizens are very aware of because those are the kinds of services they receive. And all of a sudden, from their perspective, there are a bunch more people or businesses receiving those same services. And apart from the original ag value, you know, of that land, the people in, in that area are not contributing to those services. And, and that, I think that's, I mean, I think that's what you're referring to, Roger. And that, and that is a very, you know, logical, from the citizen's perspective, way of looking at things, I believe. And so that's why I think it's important to answer these questions in perhaps less technical terms than you folks and, and we might be interested in.
If I may, before Josh, I get to you.
Please.
Chris, to your point about the elementary side of the question, see, even if it's presented in that fashion, it becomes very technical. And so I think the, the purpose of what we attempted to do, segueing back to having this training session, was to be able to have even the folks that serve with us on the PDA understand what those dynamics are that they're engaged in.
Right.
Because it is a level of sophistication that unless you have that additional type of training or some sort of effort to educate what it is you're dealing with, it becomes very, very technical.
Well, it does as you dig deeper, but, but it's, you know, I mean, there, there's a way to explain a TIF district that doesn't require, you know, 50 levels of explanation. I mean, there's a way to explain them. You know, any number of clear explanations are online, et cetera, et cetera. So that's all I'm asking for. I'm just saying, you know, these are the questions that people ask. I think they're legitimate questions. And I think there's a relatively straightforward way of answering them. That's, that's really part and parcel of what I'm talking about.
Okay, thank you. Josh?
Based on my reading of the material, I just want to make sure that I understand properly because just based on discussion, it seems like what Brett's telling us, in terms of things like snowplow, police services, basic services, that is paid on the base value of taxes that they are paying, correct? So they're paying, just like any other area would be paying for those services. It's just the incremental value that is then reinvested into that district, correct?
Correct.
So they are covering both their base services that come with any development anywhere, in addition to their economic development that the PDA manages. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Perfect. I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly.
Good clarity.
So-
Okay, other question?
Yeah. So however, there, the increment is generated by what they, what those folks and those entities would be paying in property taxes, rather they pay it into the increment. Is that correct? I mean, apart from their initial ag value. And they, they pay fees and services. I mean, they, obviously they pay those. But, but police is not, you know, fire is not a fee, snow plowing is not a fee-based service. And, and so, you know, those services, animal control, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, those are not covered in the same way in an increment in a TIF district as they are in a non-TIF district. So I don't pay for snow plowing. My property taxes do.
Absolutely. And to Josh's point, and I think you're focusing on North Gate, which is unique because of the tax base in that area is definitely different than-
Sure.
The naval ordinance plant, per se. The, most of the districts do have a large tax base and those, that large tax base will pay for those services.
Right, right, right.
And you're, I think, focusing on North Gate, which might not have as large of a tax base.
Right.
Right, today.
Yeah, right, right at this moment, today.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I have a further question. So I believe at one point that IRG requested another significant amount of money, I want to say in the neighborhood of a million dollars for cosmetic upgrades. And what, what is, and then there was, anyway, I don't know how that turned out. And I'm just curious about where we are with that, how it turned out, et cetera.
Scott?
No, let me do it?
Yeah.
Okay. We're just discussing, who's going to respond, sorry. Yes, they have requested that money. And the TIF for the naval ordinance plan, specifically within it, when it was written, it says that for the Long Pole Line Road and the buildings, there could be facade improvement. So they came to us with a budget to improve the buildings along Pole Line, redo those. They put in a request for the money. We don't have the funds that they would need to do the whole project, and they know that. So we will make available what we have and they can start the project. But in another year or so, when the second set of taxes comes in, then they can come back and ask us again for work already completed. But we're right at the conclusion of writing the OPA with them, I think. I think we're just about done with that. And I, they're talking about starting within a month. So we're, we're, they're doing well. We're, yeah, they did give us a very, very concise and very well-written proposal that we've responded to and approved.
And I do have to cite, if I may, at this juncture, we as the PDA, obviously engage ourselves in all these processes, but not to the extent that city staff does in dealing with IRG. And I have to commend the city staff for what they've been able to do. IRG is a, is a national enterprise with significant capital behind them. And the staff here has supported their every effort. And I think we've seen their diligence in what they're doing. And to this day, I can say that IRG, with a number of concerns that they originally had, that's been cleared through city staff. And I just wanted to cite them for their efforts, so.
Sure, of course. I also am aware that there's, and I don't know what entity within the Titan Center has approached a local independent community cat organization because there is apparently a significant feral cat situation within the confines of the Titan Center. And this independent organization was approached in terms of at least doing TNR, trap, neuter release, and trying to establish some kind of perhaps community cat housing so that the cats would, you know, where they, where it would be a feeding station, which would hopefully encourage the cats not to continue to be fed and housed within facilities there. So of course, the animal shelter received money and does have some money left for TNR. And so I'm wondering, you know, if, I mean, given the fact that apparently there's some concern because this entity, and they, and it was a paid deal. It's like, we don't expect you to do this volunteer, which is how the 501(c)(3) typically operates. It's like, we will pay you to come in and do what you do for the community for free. But I'm just wondering, since we have an animal shelter, part of their charge was, is TNR, they still do have some grant TNR money left, et cetera, et cetera. Have there been any conversations about how to deal with what is a parent cat problem?
Not with our board. We don't get involved with, with outside of things, with the tenants.
That would be an ownership.
That would be an ownership issue that IRG would have.
Okay.
So if, if that's something that the animal shelter would like to, to reach out to IRG and communicate with them.
Well, so would it be inappropriate since, since, you know, this organization, you know, came and said, here's what's going on and, you know, we, I mean, this is a huge project. Is it, would it be inappropriate for me to refer them to the animal shelter since that is part of the animal shelter's current charge? And this is, I mean-
I think that would be the thing.
This is way off of a PDA discussion here. It's about pets. It's, it doesn't matter if it's the same area. We're talking about two different entities. If you're comfortable reaching out to the animal shelter and saying, hey, this corporation has asked this company to do so, then that, that has nothing to do with Pocatello Development Authority.
Well, I'm just-
And so there's no reason why you couldn't do that. Now then, it would be a discussion between animal shelter and that organization, but-
Okay, great.
That wouldn't be, that would, that has nothing to do with the Pocatello Development Authority.
Just making sure I'm not overstepping, that's all. So, and then what, one of the perennial questions again is what happened at North Gate? You know, it was going to be this, all these tech jobs and, you know, all this, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, there was, there was a comprehensive plan that was presented to the community and et cetera. And, you know, I mean, county commissioners have said publicly, they don't really care what gets built up there. We don't have partnership agreements signed. You know, the city is apparently basically reaching agreements individually with, so what, what happened from, from the original presentation of this to where we are now? How, where's millennial? What, what essentially is going on?
I wasn't here, so I don't know the beginning, but I can, I can answer it.
Go ahead, yeah.
Okay. So North Gate, it, it came about at an interesting time. And it, there was a concept that was presented to the community. And there was, you know, things that we were anticipating happening. And many of those things did happen. And we did run into a period here with, with COVID and, and a lot of the economies of development changed. And there has been a lot of pressures put on the development community. You look at cost of building and cost of, of property. And there's, there's a lot of different things that are happening. North Gate is a viable development. And there are things happening out there. And you drive out there and you can see a lot of residential properties going out there. And we have the Portent of Health Trust being developed out there, their north campus. And, and there's many things going on. And it is, you know, slower than we anticipated. And, and that is true. But we are starting to see things generate. Now, there is not a, a development plan that, that has been formally adopted by the city as like a master plan. That was never the case. But there, the developer had thoughts and proposals and ideas that we, and, and most of those thoughts and proposals are moving forward. Now, are they all going to be tech jobs at this point? I don't know. But that's part of development. And that development does change as the environment changes. And so we will see what kind of development does happen out there. And it will happen out there. It's a viable and it will be a very valuable part of Pocatello. And, you know, I've been in discussions with a number of different parties out there who are looking to develop out there. And, and it will be something that will be a huge asset for this community. But it does take time. And the community needs to let it take time. It, it just doesn't happen overnight. And there is, does need to be some flexibility as to what does happen.
Can I add something to that, Brett?
Yeah, go for it.
I think experience in the last 14 months, as I've sat as the chair of the PDA, there's been an expression of interest from numerous companies and some whose names you would recognize as national enterprises about an opportunity here in Pocatello and more specifically North Gate. But I think to Brent's point, the experience we've had is that certain commitments and certain acknowledgements are just so delayed because of the experiences we've had with this whole setting of COVID and other contributors to that. My expectation is to see some of those opportunities mature and be realized. Because there are people who come into this town, not necessarily with notoriety, but with some sort of expectation that if they look at the opportunity, they can go back to their corporate offices, they can go back to their staff and say, we like this opportunity. How do we further develop it? I think Brent, Scott and I have had the opportunity to talk to some of these folks. And the one thing that we're careful about, as, as you all know, sitting in those positions of authority, is you really can't speak to a point or make some sort of commitment. But you do have some expectation that the people you do talk to at that level can come back and say, we like it. How do we begin? Just like IRG did. I think we were advised by IRG staff at one of our hearings that they actually had people in town, 14 to 15 months before they even thought about, you know, stepping in formally and talking to us about the opportunity, looking at how they would develop the naval ordinance plant. And so I think to Brent's point, it's well taken that yes, some of these things do take time. Unfortunately, we got caught, like a lot of other developers around the country and municipalities, we got caught in a window that did not prove positive for efforts like this. But my experience, I believe, and I certainly will speak a little bit for staff, is that there are people looking at North Gate. There are residential opportunities that people are considering. I mean, I'll give you one example. One developer that I spoke to said to me, David, we could have come into Pocatello two and a half years ago. It's always the what if, right? And we could have built the same plan for $80 to $90 a square foot. And now that same plan is costing us $120 to $130. The raw cost of material is now accelerated. You know, labor, not so much. But when you start looking at those considerations, then it does fall back a little bit and it delays opportunity. But I have high expectations for, for North Gate.
So I guess, you know, the last organized plan that the public was aware of was the work play, whatever that slogan was with a, you know, its own downtown and entertainment district and, you know-
Yep.
White collar jobs and et cetera, et cetera. That's the last time there was clear information. And Brett, you weren't even here then. But was last, was the last time there was clear information presented to the public? So that's kind of where, where they're, they are in terms of what they think is going on or supposed to go on. And there really hasn't been any updated communication since then. And so I guess I'm wondering, you know, would it be a good idea perhaps, or would it be possible to do some kind of, you know, update to the public is, you know, for all the valid reasons that you're citing, things had to change and this is where we are. Just, just so people know. Because, you know, this is part of the community and it should be helping to unite the community, not, not divide it. And I think some information would be very helpful and-
I just want to enter one, one quick thing. From a historical perspective, I was the one person around when this occurred, when we did this. In due diligence, we hired a consulting firm to do a feasibility study of North Gate. And it was their study that you're talking about, a lot of the, of their projections. They were very realistic at the time. And everybody thought, fine, they did their study. That's not, we're not capable of that. We're certainly hired them to do that.
I'm just talking about an update, like what's-
Well, their study was public, became public. And everybody thought, therefore it will be.
Right.
Well, this was a projection by a consultant. And due to factors that we've discussed here, all of that has changed. Now, we can certainly, there are updates available as to what's going on. But you, and you certainly understand that a lot of people that talk to us, we can't say anything-
Of course.
-out of agreement that, that they're doing this or they're even talking to us. But David is absolutely correct. We have every reason to believe, to be positive.
We have every reason to believe to be positive after this sag of the last two years. But it was that historical document that was done by a consultant that cited exactly what you were talking about.
Well.
As a projection of maybe.
But the study was based on the inputs given locally. They didn't just manufacture an idea.
No, no.
They took an idea and responded to it with a.
They spent a lot of time locally putting that report together.
Well, and they got the inputs from the developers and everything else.
Everybody, yeah.
They got the intention. And the intention, I think, is what Chris is talking about.
Yeah.
What was declared by the developers and then put into, can it pay for itself? And that actual study had to go two rounds to become feasible.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's a both hand.
Yeah.
But by an update, all I mean is essentially the kind of update that you just gave, you know, that you just gave in response to my saying, what's going on out there? I mean, that's all I'm talking about. I'm not talking about anything technical or, I mean, just like a, hey, Pocatello, you know, here's why we are where we are, you know, here's what's going on, we have reasons to be, you know, optimistic, you know, it's, I mean, just, you know, not rocket science.
Chris, I think we understand the setting for your question and I believe that Brent, Scott and I can certainly have a discussion in terms of preparing something to that effect. So thank you for the opportunity to do that.
Thank you. Other questions?
Claudia. So where are we? What's going on with Frigitech?
My understanding at this juncture is that we have a notice out to Frigitech for performance of their contractual obligations, but I don't have any other details unless, Brent, you might have some specifics that we can share.
Not that I can share at this juncture, no. We're, you know, we're working with them and we want to see them succeed. And so, and they're making every effort they can to make it happen and so.
Have they paid all their debtors?
I'm not at liberty to discuss that.
And back to Roger's question earlier, has, have we done any due diligence with regard to similar performances in other places by then?
Were you even here, Brent?
I wasn't.
No, Brent wasn't here.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at the, you know, I'm looking at the milestone effect of, you know, how the question was laid. I think the only guy that was around, and not to push him, is my neighbor, was Scott, right? But I think to your question, council member, the due diligence that I believe was done at the onset, somehow, some way was sufficient to get, you know, the engagement set. At this juncture, I believe we have looked at their inability to deliver on certain milestones and so notice was served. And I believe that if we are at liberty to discuss what that is all about, which I have not seen a copy, I've just been referenced on it, they have a deadline they have to meet. If that deadline is not met, then obviously we must report to city staff and the council as to what effect that took. And I'm not sure whether we have a trigger on that in the next week or so, but it's immediate. And I think all of us sitting on this side of the table, as well as the members of the PDA body, are just as concerned as any one of you sitting up there. This is our city and we're going to do what we have to do to protect the integrity of what it is we've done, whether it's historical or it's something we participated in. But I think we've done a pretty effective job of noticing them that they have to perform. And I think.
Well, and one thing to be clear, as far as the PDA is concerned, all of the monies that the PDA has spent out has been for public improvement that is in the ground. It is valuable an asset to the community and it has been done so in reimbursement form. And so regardless of where Frigitech lands, as far as the PDA is standing now, we're on good footing with the project and it has made progress. Do we hope Frigitech fulfills all of their obligations and we can move forward? Absolutely. We want it to be a success. And so we will, are hoping to make that happen with them and so in the near future we'll know where we stand.
Okay, thank you. Chris?
I have one last question and I know you can't discuss this in any detail, I understand that, but in general, do you perceive that, is there a danger or possibility that the whole legal situation relative to Northgate is going to further delay the possibilities for development there? Or is that going to kind of be a side event that doesn't really affect moving forward?
I don't think that's something we could comment.
That's not going to be a stumbling block?
Yeah, we're not going to comment on any illegal actions going on, so.
Any other questions, council? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report. With that, we'll move to agenda item four, city entrance signage project. City staff members and representatives of Portnoiser Valley Partners will be in attendance to give a presentation to receive council direction regarding modification of city entrance signs at South Fifth Avenue and Pocatello Creek Road. Concept drawings will be presented for the proposed project to modernize and improve the city entrances.
Mr. Mayor and council members, thanks for allowing us this time to present to you. I'm Kirk Lipchinsky. This is Maggie Clark. We are both proud Board of Director members for Portnoiser Valley Partners. Maggie is the chairperson of a subcommittee on city entrances and I also serve on that committee. Our goal, kind of by our title, is to improve the aesthetics of the entrance ways into our town. When people come to stay, come to visit, whatever, we want to create a more welcoming type of thing that they see. So as you'll see on here, the existing signs that are on there, there's no real continuity, no real theme, they're mismatched, several different styles. There's no clear message or any kind of theme and we don't feel that the locations are ideal. Some are a little far off the roadway, some you can barely read, some are hidden by other things. If you're in the wrong lane, you don't see them at all. So the background of these existing signs, the ones that have the two pillars with stone and the welcome to Pocatello, those were originally installed by Leadership Pocatello. And the little signs that you see on those, it was paid for with sponsors and they paid $200 each to have their signs attached. And that was, give or take, 20 years ago. So they've gotten their money's worth out of that on there. And as you can see, a lot of the signs are just so faded that you can't even really read what they say. The signs are very cluttered, you can't possibly read all the things that are on there. Some of them are leaning, some of them are cracked and broken. So we feel it's definitely time for an update to bring these into the current times. We would like to get a kind of a theme for the signs for a greater wayfinding effort to unify signage throughout the community. And we would like to start with the one on South Fifth, out by the Rose Garden. And then after that, and we kind of get down how we're going to do it and how it's going to work then, we'd like to move to the Pocatello Creek Road over there by the Red Lion. That one's in pretty bad shape, it's cracking and we'd like to do that. Then the one on 19th and Clark is not in bad shape, but it does need to be updated and we would like to eventually do that one as well. So what we've accomplished so far is we have written and been awarded two $10,000 if grants. And last year we raised $2,100 from the Idaho Gives Project. So we've raised quite a bit of money towards this. And we're also trying to get as many entities in the community involved as possible. So we've been collaborating with the Idaho Transportation Department, city staff, Streets Department, Parks Department, Engineering Department. And we're also working with Leadership Pocatello. And we've also got some private entities and volunteers that have been involved. I don't know, as you come down Clark Street, the big welcome sign, how it, now it has all those beautiful flowers. That was in, the flowers were planted and have been maintained by On Semiconductor and their employees and it was a great improvement. It's beautiful. Across the street on 16th, or on Clark and 19th, Ruckdine Beck Law Offices have agreed to let us use their water and they'll help us maintain that sign there on Clark and 19th Street. Portnoiser Valley Partners ourselves, we have adopted the Clark Street Interchange Sign and you'll see that get cleaned up quite a bit here in the next couple of months with some volunteer work on that as well. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Maggie to present the rest of it.
Kirk, for Maggie's part, would you identify yourself?
What's that?
For those who don't know who you are, would you identify yourself?
Yeah, I'm Kirk Lipchinsky. Sorry, I thought I said.
You did say that, yeah.
Are you just ignoring me, Rick?
There was some tight talking, so we missed it.
Yeah, so I'm Kirk Lipchinsky. This is Maggie Clark. We're both on Portnoiser Valley Partners Board of Directors.
All right. So our recommendations for you guys, we've met with the city staff multiple times and we have come, we've honestly reviewed lots of different designs and we've come to the conclusion that the existing sign on Center Street that just says Pocatello, we would like to use that same text style and then adopt that and also the lava rock that is in that area and then adopt that into a proposed sign that you see at the bottom of that page. That is in the South Fifth location as just a mock-up there. This would do a couple of different things. One, it would unify the city signage and the city entrances using the existing sign on Center, that would really tie that together with those proposed ones that we are talking about. This would also be compliant with the landscaping policy for right-of-way projects that the city staff are working on. And the Pocatello sign is unique to Pocatello. It would incorporate, excuse me, unique, the lava rocks, the local mystique, the native flowers, dark tolerant planting. And we would be working with city staff on what exactly those plants would be, making sure that they would be easy to maintain for parks and what would be the most low-maintenance design, but also have high impact for the viewers. There's a mock-up also of the Pocatello Creek Road area on that Alameda hillside. That shows a pretty grand scale of sign there. We're really still working out logistics of how that could be implemented, but it's just kind of an idea at this point. We still have to work through some engineering and things like that. So moving forward, as Kirk has mentioned, we do have a budget of $22,100 of grant money for this project effort. We would be attacking the South Fifth location first. It is the easiest for a number of reasons. And then we would be wanting to remove the Red Lion sign, well, the sign at the Red Lion, not the Red Lion sign. As it is pretty rundown and an improvement would just be to remove it. So that is our proposition at this time for that area. And then we would like to replace it when we have the funds. We're not sure how far the funds we have are going to stretch. So down the road, we would like to replace it. Also, areas we are considering are Philbin and Highway 30 intersection. You can see a photo of that on the bottom left there. That is an area of town that doesn't have an entrance sign. So we thought possibly we could incorporate one there. And then, as we've already mentioned, the Alameda hillside. So our ask of you is, well, first, we've contributed the money for the materials, we've been working on the design development for the last couple of years, so we have this design for you to review. And we would want from you the approval of this design concept as presented, the approval to remove the sign at the Red Lion and use Parks Department time to do that. They, we've been discussing this with Parks and Streets, so they're aware of this proposition. Also to relocate the, the small signs that we're talking about are the ones that say like Purple Heart City or City of Trees, things like that. We could relocate those signs that are currently just sort of stuck behind the signs to City Hall and come up with a design here to display those there, or here at City Hall. And then we would also like approval to use staff time to fabricate the signage, the letters and install those onto the rocks and then work with Parks to develop the irrigation design and modify what's currently existing there. So, and then, yeah, we've already talked about the installation as well for Streets Department. So that is our ask and we will stand for questions.
Josh, then Linda.
Yeah. So I just want to clarify, with the funding that you have available, you expect to be able to install the new Fifth Street location and then remove the Red Lion and then from there evaluate what may be remaining? Is that correct?
Yes.
Perfect.
Linda?
I just want to say yay, thank you. As somebody in a former life, in a former career who used to actually design signage, one of the things that I think is not ideal is just the inconsistency in the signs that we have and all the different looks. And I just love the idea of having a consistent image and I love the idea that you based it on my favorite sign. So that we're going to take what I think is the best sign and then use that as the basis going forward. So I really like, from a design standpoint, the idea of having a look, a consistent look at every entrance. And I just think this is wonderful and I like the look that you've come up with. So thank you very much for proposing this and for all of your work.
Great.
Thank you.
Claudia, then Chris.
So with regard to the sign at the Red Lion and those organizations that are listed there that, you know, paid money essentially to sponsor, what, are they all okay with the plaques that they paid for coming down?
Well, there wasn't originally a timeframe set that those sponsored plaques would be shown and that we can find anywhere. There's no record of that. And as we discussed, 20 years for $200 is a pretty good deal. So at this point, we would be notifying them and returning their plaques to them when we remove them off the sign if possible and.
Yeah. And I think, I think we established that a few of those organizations don't even exist anymore, didn't we? But yes, we would do our best effort to contact those organizations and let them know.
I just don't want them to suddenly their.
Yeah, do you want your plaque back?
Wait a minute, our sign's getting ripped down.
Yes.
Yeah, so yeah, we have planned to address that.
Thank you.
Chris?
I want to express my appreciation that you have taken the north end of the Simplot, what I call the Simplot entrance, into consideration because, for all the obvious reasons, let me just stop there. I also really appreciate the other work that you've done along that entrance, the berms, the, all of that sort of thing. I think it's made a huge difference to a not very attractive entree to our city. And with that said, I would encourage you to, rather than have that kind of be at the tail end, to think about maybe moving it up the priority. It is the first, if you're coming from the west, it's the first Pocatello entrance you hit. You know, it would support, I think, all the good work that Historic Downtown Pocatello is trying, you know, is, has, has been implementing and planning. So I would like to say thank you, but would you consider moving that end of North Main Simplot higher up the priority list?
Honestly, based on logistics, it will be probably because the Alameda hillside will be pretty challenging. So if we do have the extra funding, then yes, I think we'll consider that option.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Roger?
I really think it's important to have signage. It's something I've missed in my time at Pocatello and I appreciate your work on this. I also am aware, well, first of all, I got a question. Do we have the fabrication capabilities with the city? of all, I got a question. Do we have the fabrication capabilities with the city to make this lettering?
Yes, we do.
Okay. I just needed to know that because if we don't... Second thing is, as I count it, we have about seven entrances that need signage. When you get off the freeway at the Portnife Gap, you're in Pocatello pretty quick there.
Yeah.
When you get off on North Gate, the North Interchange, there's, there's a place at Pocat... I'm just saying that you've covered most of it, but in your planning, continue to expand it because I think all of these entrances warrant.
Oh, we would love to do that in the future, absolutely.
I love the design that you guys came up with. It's clean, it's modern. Yeah, it's really nice.
It'll last 20 years.
Doesn't have to put anyone's name on it.
I just want to comment that, you know, as the former president of Portnife Valley Partners, it's grand to see this finally happen. We've been talking about this for a couple of years now, looking at different designs, different locations, how it could be done, how it could be funded, who was going to do it. It's been a long, hard project. These two folks, along with Hannah and a couple of other people, have, have made this happen finally. And it's, it's going to be a grand difference to our community and the way people see Pocatello when they come to our town. Thank you.
Mark Delquist has been instrumental.
Yeah, Mark's been a big help. And so is city staff, Tom, and, and yeah.
Chris?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, we've been very complimentary and rightly so of your efforts. But, you know, I think behind the scenes, as is so frequently the case, we have all kinds of city employees at Parks or in Science and Environment and elsewhere planning that, that, you know, kind of operate in the, in the shadows and provide the support for these kinds of things but don't really get much public recognition. And I think it's critical to whoever they are, to say thank you to them and to help the public realize that, you know, there are these important community, city employee partnerships successfully occurring.
And it's been, it's been remarkable how cooperative they've been, especially Merrill Quayle, Tom Kirkland, I think they're both here. But yeah, they've, everybody that we've worked with the city so far has just been...
Parks, sounds like Parks.
Parks, yes, absolutely. Yeah, they've all been...
What will the letters be? The letters will be what?
I believe we decided on stainless steel.
So those will be okay in, like, snow?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Is that what the, the current one?
I believe so.
Been up there, but I can't remember. I think it's stainless.
Yeah, I think it's stainless.
Are you going to do, one of the things I love about that sign too is the solar lighting of it. Or will that be an element in these as well?
We're looking at...
Yeah, that's, that's one of the things that we have to, we need a little bit more information on, which is kind of one of the reasons we want to do the South Fifth first, just because everyone that we've gotten, received input from, they feel that's going to be the easiest one to do, to get water to, find out how much water we need, if we need power, if we need solar lights. So that's kind of...
A kind of test case?
That's kind of our experimental one, find out how much everything is going to cost, how long it's going to take, just basically the logistics of it. And then from there, we'll know going forward what we need to do to get the rest of them done.
And when do you expect to start the physical work? Obviously, you've been working for a long time, but the actual work, when do you anticipate that starting?
Well, it'll be contingent on Streets' schedule to do the fabrication, but, so I don't want to speak for them, but hopefully this spring we can get it fabricated and then we hope to install this summer.
Is it appropriate in this meeting to make a motion?
Well, I was just getting, getting a feel for it. I was going to bring it in front of the council at one of the regular council meetings. It sounds to me like everybody's very supportive of it. And so opposed to a motion and then set things into action, we'll get it put down and, and word, and then you're going to vote on it in the future.
Okay.
So, super. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Great ideas. With that, we're going to, let's go ahead and take a break, council, for a few minutes, and that'll give our historic preservation an opportunity to, to get set up. Go ahead and get started again. Thank you very much for, oh, I need a head thumbs up. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much for joining us after the break. We'll go ahead and continue our meeting with agenda item number five is historic preservation in Pocatello. Idaho State Historic Preservation Office, represented by Dan Everhart and Planning and Development Services Department staff members, will be in attendance to provide information and answer questions from the council regarding a historic preservation program in Pocatello. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Dan Everhart. I am the outreach historian at the State Historic Preservation Office. And before I introduce myself and my office in more detail, I just want to thank you for this opportunity to, to just talk with you, really, about, about the program which you manage here at the city of Pocatello, our long-term relationship that we have had, productive relationship that we've had with the city. And so thank you for that opportunity. And I want to thank Jim here for his support as your, as your staff liaison to the Historic Preservation Commission in our office. The Idaho State Historic Preservation Office, where I work, is a department within the larger Idaho State Historical Society. You may know that the State Historical Society is a state agency with a governor-appointed board and a series of programs and, and institutions which you probably will recognize when I mention them. We do all of this work to promote, protect, and preserve the history of the state of Idaho. And briefly, without boring you, I'll just tell you, some of these programs and departments include the Idaho State Museum in Idaho in Boise, which is, which is our, our state historical museum. We also maintain the Idaho State Archives, which is mandated repository for city, county, and, and state records, as well as thousands of personal and private corporate records, photographs, et cetera. We maintain a series of state historic sites. Some of the best known of those are the Old Idaho Penitentiary in Boise, but they also include sites closer here to you, including property down at Franklin, Idaho's oldest town. And, and then the State Historic Preservation Office, which is where I work and is a repository of information about the state's historic and archaeological sites. We maintain and build that repository of information on behalf of the citizens of the state to better understand the resources that we have, better work with our local and our federal partners as, as projects, development, and preservation activities take place around the state. And before I move forward with what I was told, I had three to six hours, so I appreciate...
We just ordered lunch, so I was wondering how long we were going to be here.
You might want to get dinner on the line. Before, before I, I drone on and on, I do just want to acknowledge that Jim Johnston is here. Jim represents the city of Pocatello and all of southeast Idaho on the Idaho State Historical Society Board of Trustees. He, he is my boss. He's actually my boss's boss's, boss's boss. And so I really appreciate Jim's presence here. He, he does a great job as a cheerleader for local Pocatello history as well as supporting the efforts of the agency across his region and beyond. So thanks, Jim, for being here. I just want to, I just want to give the council sort of a basic introduction to the work that we do together, and then we can talk in sort of informal way about what that looks like. Pocatello is part of a larger program known as the Certified Local Government Program. We abbreviate that often as CLG. So I'll do my best to refer to it as the Certified Local Government Program, but if I slip up and use CLG, you'll know what I mean. It's a program of local partners working together with the Idaho Shippo and the National Park Service to promote historic preservation at the local level. Right now, our, our program includes 40 city and county governments across the state. We're very proud of that number, and we just added Teton County to the list in 2021. Now, I'm going to brag on Pocatello for a minute because Pocatello has been with us from the very beginning. In 1983, you became a certified local government. As a local partner of our agency, you were there in year one of the program. And over the course of the past 39 years, in addition to all of the good work that you've done, we've been able to support that work with grants in 37 of those 39 years. Those grants, I just have to tell you, have totaled nearly $280,000. And so we are very much appreciative of the opportunity to continue to work with the city. I'm pleased to tell you that it looks quite likely, having recently met, to review our current grant applications. We stand to, to give Pocatello an additional $15,000 this year to help you do the work that you do to support the work that we do. Now, I will, I will just divert slightly to say, before we move on, some of that, some of that funding that we're providing to the city this year is to help us in support of bringing Idaho's Heritage Conference to Pocatello in September of this year. You may have heard of this global pandemic. We have delayed this conference twice. We are committed to having the conference in Pocatello. We anticipate it taking place in the third week of September at Idaho State University. And we appreciate all of the support that the city has given us to make that happen. So whether it's those funds or any of these other mechanisms for funding, basically, the, the cornerstone of what we're doing is using those funds to support programs around the state and within Pocatello. And these programs, for the most part, revolve around the National Register of Historic Places. So let's just talk about what that is very briefly. The National Register is the nation's official list of properties considered important in our past and worthy of preservation. It is a program of the National Park Service with these properties listed in sort of a national program, though the properties themselves can be significant at only the local level. There are approximately 7,000 places in Idaho listed in the National Register, but most of those, many of those, fall within the boundaries of a, of a district. So they're not individually listed, but listed as part of a grouping of historic places. And we'll talk about that more when we talk about Pocatello's particular sites that are listed. I mentioned this was the National Park Services program, but of course, it's administered by our office at the State Historic Preservation Office. And it's very important for you to understand that it's an honorific program. It, there's a lot of confusion about this, and I'll repeat myself. The National Register of Historic Places is an honorific program. It is meant to provide recognition to places that are significant. It does not provide restriction on what a private property owner may do with their property, listed or not. So one more time for clarity, the National Register of Historic Places is honorific, and we work with private property owners to designate their properties. But after that designation, no restrictions are involved. We care, of course, about what you, as a private property owner or a city government or whomever, may do with your National Register property. We're happy to provide support and expertise and advice, but we cannot and will not tell you what to do with that property. This building, you may recognize as the Bethel Missionary Baptist Church on Fifth Avenue. It is the most recent Pocatello property to be listed in the National Register. And I'm happy to tell you that that nomination was accepted and, and confirmed by the National Park Service in the fall of 2021. It recognizes the role that Bethel has played in Pocatello and the state's African-American civil rights movement and the extraordinary role it has played in the black community here in Pocatello, which you may know to be one of the two sort of major centers for Idaho's black population, the other being Boise.
Can I, can I get you back up a little bit, Chris? We've, not, not slide, but we have had numerous issues brought to, before us because of a conflict of what somebody wanted to do with their property versus what our Historic Preservation Commission told them they could do. And the biggest issue has been windows. The second biggest issue has been a painting on a, on a wall of horses. And then the signage issue of putting a decal on their business. It's a bridal business and they had to write on it. And if we understand what you're saying, you do not, if a registered entity does not have restrictions, how do we put restrictions on everything that's in a district?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Bray, I, I have all that information, and I would love to tell you about it in my presentation, and then we can have those questions. I can answer the question for you now, but I, I have that queued up in, in my comments, and I, and I'd like to finish those, and then I think we can have some...
Okay, I was just going by what you said. It just really struck a note of discontinuity to me.
Yeah. And, and, and there is, there is quite a bit of, of confusion and misinformation about how these various levels of historic preservation interrelate to each other and, and what they mean and what they do. And I hope to answer some of that here for you.
Fair enough.
So just to back up a little bit, before we understand what properties are significant or eligible for the National Register program, or how to manage those places, we first have to know what those places are, where they are, what stories they tell. And we do that by, by documenting historic sites around the state of Idaho. We do that in partnership with our local partners as well as our federal partners. There are approximately 90,000 sites, both historic and archaeological, around the state of Idaho, which have been documented in our database. Now, that's just, 90,000 sounds like a lot. That's actually a small drop in the bucket of our statewide inventory of historic and archaeological places, but it represents the places that have been documented. Here, you can see a map of Pocatello, and you can see, based upon the concentration of dots, where we have a record for a property. Over decades, I mentioned before, 40 years of, of partnership between the city and our office, we have, with Pocatello's leadership, have systematically inventoried much of the city's historic core. So these dots, which are concentrated around your downtown, represent the sites that have been recorded or in our system. According to our records in Pocatello city limits, we have documentation for 54 archaeological properties and another 2,384 historic places or buildings. Now, I'll be quick, quick to say, not all of these places are important. They may have just been documented without necessarily being significant. And depending on the age of the record, some of our records, again, going back 40 years, the building may not even be there anymore. So this is information on file legacy data that we have in our files, but not all of these places necessarily exist. So if we're taking this information, again, our documentation, our survey information, we then cull and sift that information to fine-tune the, the inventory that we have and list places in the National Register. So of those 2,400 Pocatello properties, 16 sites have been individually listed in the National Register of Historic Places. That is to say, they're an individual dot that falls outside of one of these broader districts. The districts you see represented by the town. districts, the districts you see represented by the tight clusters within the pink outlines, the individual dots, of course, being individually listed properties. So we have 16 individual National Register listings in Pocatello and seven National Registered Districts. Those seven National Registered Districts account for somewhere in the several hundred site number. So something probably about 1,000 properties are represented in those seven National Registered Districts, the oldest of those being your downtown Pocatello Historic District, which was designated in 1982, the most recent being the Old Town Residential Historic District, which was designated in 2008. And just so you understand how our grant program and the city works, we're often working together to proactively document places. And then based upon that documentation, as I say, we sort of sift and call, we determine what is eligible for listing in the National Register, and with the city's support and the support of the private property owner, we then list those places. No place may be listed in the National Register without the consent of its owner individually. And if a majority of property owners in a district object to that designation, that stops the process there. So this is not a draconian program that institutes sort of a state or federal program upon unsuspecting or unwilling citizens. This is something that happens in, you know, with their approval and consent, and certainly with the buy-in of the city of Pocatello.
Follow-up. So if an owner gets agreement and everything, they get designated historical site, can the next owner withdraw, or is that binding on the property?
Typically, Councilman, typically, we do not delist properties. A property is either significant and eligible, or it is not. Because we don't control what the property owner does with their property, they could very well make alterations to the building. Bethel, for instance, may make alterations to their building, which would render it no longer eligible. And if we were asked to go back and determine whether or not it should be listed, we might have to say it no longer is. So I don't know if that answers your question. Typically, we don't delist properties. The designation carries from one property owner to the next, but again, because we don't restrict what property owners do, they may make changes that alter their access to their program. And that's a great segue. Thank you very much.
So it's kind of like a rubric essentially for, you know, that needs to be fulfilled in order to be eligible, let's say, for a grant that would apply to it.
There are qualifications to be listed in the National Register. Not every property can be listed. They have to meet certain criteria. So but your question about changes and alterations, just to stress, a property owner may change or alter their historic National Register-listed property, and neither our office nor the National Park Service may tell a property owner what they may do. Proof of that is not just in incremental alterations to a historic property, but in certain unfortunate instances, their outright demolition. So I wasn't here, and I can't blame any of you for what happened in 1983, but you know, the Bannock Hotel was demolished in downtown Pocatello. It had just been listed as part of Pocatello's first National Register-listed district. So there was nothing that our office or the National Park Service could do to prevent the Simplock Corporation from removing that building. And it's not a role that we would take on. It's not part of our mandate. It's not part of our legal allowances. So now to the commissioner's main question. If the National Register program is honorific, then what is this mechanism that results in these conversations that you have, these appeals that come to you? That comes through the city of Pocatello's designated local historic district and your own local design review program. This mechanism exists under the allowance of Idaho state law. Idaho Code 67-4601 allows you, as a certified local government, a CLG, may give yourself the authority to designate, protect, and preserve historic places within your community. And that's important to know. You can't do it without the mechanism in place. So you have a Historic Preservation Commission, you have a process and a system under which you may do this. Idaho Code does not allow a city or a county to randomly institute these protections or controls. It's done through this sort of very carefully structured process. So the city of Pocatello has one local design review district. I mentioned before, we have seven National Registered Districts, but you have one local design review district. That's the downtown Pocatello Design Review District, Historic Design Review District. It closely follows the boundaries of our earliest 1982 National Register district. It was created in 1985 by the city of Pocatello and your council, and it was likely a response, a direct response to the removal of the Bannock Hotel. Because, as we've said before, the National Register program cannot protect or put in place any sort of system there, but you may at the local level, and you have. That's the program that you have been operating now for whatever that may be, 35, 36 years, right? So that's your program, your program at the local level. You are not alone in doing this, of course. There are cities and counties across the state who also institute their own local design review process for historic places. Okay. Now, I'm going to just get a couple more things on the table. There are some occasional nuances to everything I've said before, right? So I just want to tackle them briefly so that we can add them to the conversation if we need to. Properties which are listed in the National Register are, it's an honorific program. However, if federal lands, federal funds, or federal permits are used for that property, there is a review by our office. We do not have the authority to tell the federal agency that they cannot proceed with their program or their project, but we have a federal requirement to review that federal investment in that historic National Register-listed place. And just as an example, what could that be? A HUD loan. That could be a HUD loan. It could be CDBG funds. It could be federal transportation funds. It could be some sort of federal permitting, or of course, federal lands, as we know, Idaho is awash in federal lands. So I just want to lay that out there. There is a nuance under which National Register designation may allow for additional review by our office. It's only and when federal funds, federal lands, or federal permits are involved. And last slide, and I think we want to move on to questions, I just want to talk more broadly about why we do this. Of course, there is a, there's an aesthetic, there's a cultural value that historic places bring to the state, that bring to individual communities, and that is, I think, something that's easily understood by most folks. But I want to be very clear, there is a very well-documented financial value that this work also brings to a community. It brings access to financial incentives. So for instance, the Peterson Project that you see here, the Whitman Project a few years ago, these took advantage of a federal tax credit incentive. They got 20, they will get 20% federal tax credit return on the investment they put into that property, only accessible to properties listed in the National Register of Historic Places. This is an absolute, and probably the largest economic incentive to historic places in the country. It's used across the nation and generates not just millions, billions of dollars annually in redevelopment projects around the nation. And of course, then there's things like heritage tourism. I don't have to tell you about historic downtown Pocatello, the Relight the Night Committee. These are things that are done to bring tourism and tourists to Pocatello, because I can tell you, they don't go to, you know, they don't go to any place USA. No offense to our friends who own the mall, they don't go to the mall to experience Pocatello. They come to one of these historic neighborhoods, and they spend dollars when they do. These historic districts and neighborhoods attract small business, older, smaller, easier, accessible properties attract small businesses. That is a proven fact time and again, and not just small business, but mixed use. So now we're overlaying housing with commercial, with entertainment. It all works together in a way that some of the larger, newer, single-use projects simply cannot do. And in fact, there's been a nationwide realization of this, and that's why you see newer mixed-use developments cropping up, because the value of these historic neighborhoods and their model is undeniable. And let's not leave out the residential neighborhoods. Historic district designation supports property values in residential neighborhoods. Value increases more quickly in those neighborhoods than it does in properties and places not designated, and it maintains those values in any sort of economic downturn. That's in residential neighborhoods. And lastly, it keeps money locally. Rehabilitation of historic places is very labor-intensive. Less, you know, less new material comes into a rehab project, right? You're not bringing in much more steel or brick or wood. So they're not bringing in those materials from outside the community. You're employing local contractors to do more intensive work in those rehab projects. So it keeps the money here locally in Pocatello. I don't need to go on and on and on about this, because I know we have questions. I just want to remind you, we choose to protect these historic places because of the value that they bring to us. And we value not just those places, but the long-term partnership that we've had with the city, as I've said, for 39 years, being champions for the work that we do at the state level. So I'm happy to answer any questions that I did not cover in my presentation.
Questions, Council?
Follow-up.
Roger. So it's our own rules that makes this stuff come back to us, essentially?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Bray, absolutely. You have introduced a historic design review program in downtown Pocatello. It's been on the books for 36 years. It's your program. And you manage that program through your city staff, Planning and Development Services. And so, yes, it's your program. And I want to tell you, while it's your program and you're in the driver's seat, we're happy to assist. And I'm happy to say that $10,000 out of that $15,000 grant that we're giving the city in 2022 is to facilitate a reevaluation and a rewriting of your local design review ordinance and the guidelines, the guidance that you give to your property owners. So hopefully, some of the questions and misinformation or misunderstandings that lead folks to your dais can be sort of sidetracked by giving them more and better information. We're happy to help pay for that additional information. And it's going to be a pretty public-intensive process in which we're going to, you're going to engage the citizens of the community to better understand what you need and what you want and what would help you. You'll hire an outside consultant, most likely, but it will be informed and driven by the citizens of Pocatello.
How long do you anticipate that process taking?
The grant's a two-year process, and so in the next two years, you'll see that.
We've actually, I'm not going to correct Jim, but we have actually extended our grant program to a three-year cycle, starting in 2022. So you will have three years to fully implement that, those grant dollars, which should be more than enough time.
Yeah, I just want to thank you, Jim, and also other folks in the planning department for taking this project on and, you know, figuring out a way for us to get some clarity and some clear criteria. I think it's, you know, as Roger alluded to, it's much needed, particularly with the new historic downtown plan that's been recently rolled out. So, you know, thank you very much. I think this is going to be a vast improvement. And again, it's, my personal view is that government programs, including local government programs and efforts, should be focused on uniting rather than dividing the community. And I think that this has been a bit of a divisive issue, and I'm just very grateful to you and other folks in planning who have brought this to the table. So thank you.
Linda?
I also think it's really good to, you know, review standards after, you know, periodically, let's say, after some time, and just make sure that we're doing things the best way we can, and that those standards are clear and that they make sense to everybody. But one thing I really wanted to thank you for is, well, for your presentation in general, but for making it clear that there is proven advantages and benefits to doing historic preservation and to, you know, to preserving our history. There's actually financial, economic benefits to that. And I think sometimes people don't understand that part of it. They think sort of, you know, why does it matter? And there's lots of reasons that it matters, but I think that's a really sort of important, tangible thing for people to understand why we do have a program like this. So I thank you for explaining that and making that very clear.
Ruth?
Could you define in about 60 seconds how properties qualify?
I'm only going to talk about our National Register program here, Councilmember, not your local program of designation, because that operates under its own rules. For a property to be eligible for listing in the National Register, generally speaking, it must first be roughly 50 years old. Properties younger than 50 years old can't be designated because we don't know enough about their importance and their larger history, right? So properties must be generally 50 years old, and then they must exhibit two things. They must exhibit both a, I use, we use the word integrity. That is jargon, but what it means is they must essentially look as they did during the time where they became important. If George Washington slept there, but there were so many additions and alterations and a 16-story tower behind, and George Washington wouldn't know it when he saw it, then it can't be listed. It must retain its integrity as a historic place. So that's one. And number two, it must be documented to be significant. Not every historic place, not even every historic place that looks as it did 100 years ago is eligible for listing in the National Register. It must also be significant. That significance can come in the area of architecture, or general history, or even a particular person, or archaeological significance, but you must be able to document and prove significance. It cannot just be old. It must be significant. It must retain integrity. Those are the two key elements under which we review a property.
So that's kind of subjective, right?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And we put, we operate under a federal guideline which defines these various things. these various things that I've glossed over in 60 seconds. It, it defines them in much more detailed terms. We aren't, we aren't out there making determinations based upon our own personal preferences. It's about applying a national standard here in Idaho. So we do that. But you're right, there is some room, there's some wiggle room for subjectivity in there. When does the number of alterations to a property tip at the balance to it becoming no longer able to, you know, exhibit that historic character? That can be a little bit squishy, as can this question about historic significance. But we try our best with a clear conscience to, to review our guidelines. And, and, you know, we've got staff members in our office that have been doing this for decades, and it's not just here in Pocatello, of course, but around the, around the state. So we have a pretty good feeling for our program.
Are those details going to make up the next three to six hours of your presentation?
Yes, yes, yes. For, in, in hour six, we'll get to why, why architectural properties can be significant. Yeah.
Josh?
Yeah. You mentioned some of the, you mentioned both passive and active financial benefits that come from historic preservation. Passive being retention of property values during depression, increased value for property and appreciation, et cetera. You also mentioned the active of tax cuts, for example, or reimbursements that come to historic properties.
Yes.
Do property owners who are residential benefit from active financial benefit in any way? Tax cuts, grants, can they apply for grants in, for example, that historic residential area that's been designated on the registry?
Commissioner, that's a, Councilman, that's a great question. The fact is that our financial benefits in Idaho, in Idaho, are more restricted to properties that are operated by commercial or, or not-for-profit civic entities. The, the fact of the matter is, the federal tax credit program, that great 20% tax credit program that incentivizes the Peterson owner, is not available to the owner of a single-family residence. There's been talk about amending that at the, at the federal level. More likely where we will see some tax benefit given is if, and I'm going to say when, Idaho becomes one of the last states to pass its own historic preservation tax credit program. Now, we've been working on this and not working on this for several years, pandemic and elections and all sorts of things get in the way of that. Ideally, what we do is we'd model that and, and have produced some, some concepts that are based on programs in Utah, Montana, some of our other sister states where they're actually applying tax credits at the state level for not just commercial properties but residential properties. Right now, you're right. That, that phrase passive, yeah, is, is more relevant to, to residential properties.
Any other questions, counsel? Dan, great presentation. Thank you, Jim. Thank you very much.
I will be coming back to you when we're ready to approach the legislature about those tax credit programs. We'll need all the support we can get.
With the legislature, you will, for sure.
Thank you too for working with us on the conference and sticking with us on that. We're now in our third attempt and final attempt to bring that conference to Pocatello, but I'm so glad that, that we're making that happen.
Absolutely. We're excited about it. It's going to be hundreds of folks to, to Pocatello, and, and they're excited to see and learn more about both local and regional history here, so we're excited to do that.
It's coming in September, so keep that on your calendars.
The mayor's agreed to give a, an introduction. He doesn't maybe remember that, but he's agreed to give an introduction for our keynote address.
Is it three to six hours?
Yeah, yes, three to six hours.
I'm sorry, this question just occurred to me. Clearly, in Pocatello, I mean, there are three sort of significant, from my layperson's perspective, entities. One is the railroad, one is the city itself, and the third one, of course, is, is the, the tribe and the reservation. And
I won't tell ISU you said that.
Well, I mean, it is, I mean, fair enough, but anyway. I guess land-based, anyway. And it's no secret that there is a less than, the relationship perhaps between the railroad and the city, but certainly between the city and, and the tribe is less than what all of us would, would want. And so I'm wondering in, within this process, whether there are some opportunities for conversations that, if nothing else, might actually be healing conversations? And whether or not, anyway, let me just stop there because it appears to me that there is, there are some, you know, without jeopardizing any legal issues, that there might perhaps be some things that could happen or could be acknowledged that would help heal and create a more productive cooperative work environment.
Councilmember, I, I think, I think you're right. I think there are opportunities here. I'm going to be, I'm going to be more specific, though. The, the program to revise, rewrite, reevaluate your, your local design review process in this very small district relative to the size of the city, should be, and I hope will be, concentrated on sort of the wonky elements of what triggers a, a review and all of those things. There may be an opportunity to engage a partner like, like Union Pacific. But, but I think the, the opportunities to engage the tribe will be more limited, perhaps, limited to some question about when excavation happens in the, in the downtown district. Where this broader conversation happens, and I'm not suggesting you leave it until that point, but when the city, as it routinely does, rewrites and reevaluates its preservation plan, because just like everything else, you have, you know, you have multi-year plans, trajectories for where you want to go as a program. When you rewrite your preservation plan in whatever it is, six years, that is the perfect place to really hammer home these relationships and the values that you place on them. And I can tell you from recent experience in, in very new preservation plans with the city of Coeur d'Alene, they, they did a lot of intensive outreach to the Coeur d'Alene tribe. We are, we, we had a similar conversation with, with other entities when, again, when they're doing preservation planning to make a specific effort to reach out to their tribal partners and any other partner. So I think there, there's maybe a place where we can insert some of that into this project, but really, I see in, you know, in five to six years, when you're rewriting your preservation plan with our help, we, you know, we would encourage the city to really do a lot of intensive outreach to those partners and see how better, you know, to, to both establish and, and reevaluate those relationships.
And are we about six years out, Jim, in terms of rewriting?
About five years, yeah.
And is it a 10-year plan?
It's recommended about every five years it be rewritten. The last one was done in 2019, so.
So, and, and I mean, I realize you're not in charge, but is there any energy toward perhaps looking at a five-year window as opposed to something longer, given that you guys have a lot, you guys and gals have a lot on your plates right now?
Yeah, I think, I think that's definitely worth considering, for sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will go to agenda item six, addition of Juneteenth to the city's recognized holiday schedule. Human Resources staff members will be in attendance to discuss the addition of the new federal holiday, Juneteenth, to the city's recognized holiday schedule.
It's still morning, so good morning, everybody. Heather Buchanan, Human Resources Director. It's a rare occasion, I don't bring a PowerPoint with me, so hopefully that means I'm keeping this short. There's no major handouts, so this should be pleasing for everybody. Pursuant to the handbook, to add a holiday that is either recognized by the federal government or the state government, I need the approval of the mayor and council. So I'm here seeking guidance from the council today to bring forth a handbook amendment at the next council meeting to add Juneteenth as a legal holiday for the city of Pocatello. It was signed in, it was signed by Governor Little last year. It was not recognized at the state court level. Court? Yeah. Because there wasn't enough time, he signed it just a few days before the actual holiday. So Juneteenth occurs on June 19th. That's the actual holiday observed will obviously shift. This is one of those holidays that is tied to a day and not the third Thursday of a month. So I'm here seeking council's feedback on whether or not you would like to see this as an agenda item at the next meeting.
I don't think we have a choice since it's a federal holiday and the state's already done it.
It's not recognized a lot of places by a lot of organizations and businesses.
I'm not saying that. I'm saying that we're a government entity, and government entities at the state level and national level have done that, and we set the precedent.
Not all of them.
So currently, I have numbers.
Our state has done it.
Currently, I have 18 entities that have responded that they've added the holiday. Three are currently in the process of considering, and 12 are not adding the holiday.
Are you talking about municipal?
Municipal or county.
Okay.
The Ada County Highway District falls in there.
And so what does that look like?
I actually have a handout.
No, not, not, no.
I have a handout!
No, no, no. I mean, adding it, adding it to the city's calendar, what does that?
It's an amendment to the handbook.
Right.
Section B, A, we currently have 10 set holidays. We would be adding an 11th, and the floating holiday would remain. We would ask for an MOU with the police and fire union contracts so that we could add those in because we do designate the holidays we observe within those contracts as well. So on the next agenda, you would actually see three, three documents for this one item.
And theoretically, I mean, it has a small, but it does essentially have a compensation impact because there's one less workday and
It's a reallocation of funds form from work hours into holiday hours, but there is no additional budget expense that would have to be observed.
Right, right. I, I mean, I, I think historically, it's, it's important to acknowledge a perhaps somewhat uncomfortable portion of our national history.
Agreed.
And I think that it says a lot, not only to the African-American population, but to other minority and underrepresented populations that we, that government entities recognize that we are not a homogeneous society necessarily. I don't think it, I mean, I think it's like many holidays, there are holidays
I don't have an answer for that. Is there something else?
Okay, then.
You're done.
There are holidays that a business might not choose to include. That happens now.
It does.
I mean, there are businesses that are open and banks are closed and all, you know, it's, and so I don't see that as an impediment or breaking with tradition. Me personally, I think it's important that we include this.
So when I asked, what does this look like? I was looking for, city offices are closed, there's going to be no waste collect. I mean, that's kind of what I'm looking for as an answer. What does that look like?
So the majority of city facilities would be closed. Sanitation usually chooses to operate on holidays just because the makeup time to collect from holiday is brutal for them. For some, for like police, they don't have set holidays because they're open. We would add holiday hours to their bank. But city facilities on the whole would be closed. Those employees would be off work. If they do work, the holiday pay kicks in, and then for police, we would be adding holiday hours.
So there would be a financial impact on the city?
For, for sanitation, they would absorb that within, I believe, your overtime budget?
But the holiday hours were police and fire?
Well, police and fire, this is a little bit different. Police doesn't have set holidays. They have holiday hours that are loaded into the system and then they use. Fire currently receives 5% of their pay and, on top of their pay for holidays, they do not close. We would be adding eight holiday hours like we did with the eclipse setting so that we didn't have to go in and try to renegotiate that 5% to something else. We would be simply loading hours.
So would that, or would that, those two things not have a financial impact to the city?
There will be no increase to the established budget.
Roger?
I just think, we just went through the historical preservation
I know, that went well for me. I was pleased for the placement.
But the other part of it was, it talked about how the black church is, is significant because we are one of two major population areas in the state historically for having the African-American population. I just think it's important that we recognize our legacy and jump on board on this. So that's, that's my perspective.
I think it's important because it's important, and I, I don't know that we would all be sitting here debating the merits of adding a non-Caucasian holiday to the calendar. So I think it needs to be on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I support adding this to the agenda. I think we should recognize this holiday, so I would fully support that. I think it's an important part of our history. I will mention the, the Juneteenth event that we had in Pocatello, that the NAACP held was, just the attendance was incredible, and it was a really just moving and, and successful community event, bringing all different people together. So I think there's spirit of support for this in the community is my sense, and I absolutely think that it's an important thing to do.
Okay.
That's a majority.
Looks to me like we've got, we'll bring it in front of the council to, to make a decision at a future council meeting then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we will move to agenda item number seven, is a proposed fiscal, a proposed fiscal, or February fiscal year 2022 budget amendments. Finance staff department, finance department staff will be in attendance to present to council detailed information on proposed fiscal year 2022 February budget amendments for public hearing to be held on February 17, 2022. And council, as you know, we do not have a CFO, so that finance staff is myself right now, so as soon as I can get this pulled back up, I had it and lost it. I don't know how I'm going to do that. That's not it. I can go through the timelines that we've, that we've had and what it is. I can answer what questions I can. I have asked the department heads to, to be here as well, to, to help us through this as we, as we get through this. And so we'll go ahead and move on this. This, very quickly, the budget amendments, I'll give you a timeline. Notice has been sent to the Idaho State Journal, honored before January 21. It was noticed, public notice was made in the journal on February 2nd, public notice on February 9th, yesterday. Today, at the work session, we'll discuss it, and then next Thursday night, there will be a public hearing on it. There are a number of amendments to be made, and so I'll just go down the list that we have. The first amendment that we need to make is amendment for the mayor's office, and that is for the mayoral runoff. The total amount for that is $55,977. We did receive the bill from the county for that, that runoff, as we discussed it before and in preparing the budget. We were told by our then-acting CFO, Jim Krueger, that that would be appropriate to remove that from the budget, and that's the appropriate use for and that's the appropriate use for the excess reserves and for the reserve policy to fund because that happens every four years. And so that is on the budget amendment or the budget amendments. If, we've got the bills from the county right here. If anybody's interested in looking at those and throughout this next week, we have that there. Another one that we have is, we've got two for City Hall. One is, City Hall, the fund will come from Fund 78 for $288,000. That is for the renovating and building of the structured walls at City Hall for the finance department. We'll finally put them behind hard walls. The council's discussed that a number of times. We did put into the budget $288,000 for that. That money was supposed to be put in the line item for City Hall. It was put in Fund 78, and so that will come out of Fund 78. There's also $20,000 that was discussed during the budgeting process for the need of the building department. And this is, we thought we had enough money in there for that. This was put in, in the budget, but it's, just needs to be put back in the right line item, and that's $20,000 for furniture of the building department there.
Good question. How is it in the budget?
So...
We have to go to fund balance because we don't approve fund balance. We approve the budget.
So the money that was put in the budget, then Jim Krueger, the CFO, put that instead of in the line item for building, he put it in the line item Fund 78.
Is that money left?
That was, that was at the, the question of the council because council wanted to have the ability to say, yes, we will be, we're there. You wanted to have control of that instead of having that spent. And so that's what we're going through is that process at this point.
So if fund balance equals excess reserves, that suggests that this money is coming from excess reserves back into 78?
So Fund 78 is the fund that all of the excess reserves was put in. Fund 78 also was put in the money that the council was interested in this year, making sure it was spent the way it was supposed to be. Jim put it instead of in the line item that we all anticipated. He put it in the Fund 78, which would be the fund balance, which is fund balance. This line 78 is where he put it. We're, we don't know why he didn't put it in the line items that we anticipated, but we know he put it in Fund 78.
So is... That's how it was published? With that, with the money in Fund 78?
That's, well...
Because I don't recall that.
That is a really, really good question. We're finding a lot of mistakes that were made in the budget where he put the lines, but we do know that this is where the money is.
Well, I guess my question is, is this money that is appropriated for '22? Or is this money that the, what we have referred to in the past as excess department reserves, which don't exist?
No, this money that we're talking, these two were in the budget for FY '22, yes.
The proposed?
The proposed budget for FY '22.
But that was part of Rick's motion to take out the...
No, this money, that was not part of Rick's motion to take this out. This money was included after the mayor and county and city staff went through that and removed those dollars. And so this money was proposed. It was in this last budget that we passed. This 288 and this $20,000 was in the budget that was passed.
I guess, why are we amending a budget if it was in the budget?
Because we need to move it from Fund 78 to the correct fund, the line, so that it can be done.
When you put it in 78, it's like putting it in your savings account.
We need the spending authority.
We need, that's exactly right. We need the spending authority of this.
But whether we give it or not, whether we budget it or not are two different questions.
Well, it was...
We can't spend it if it's not budgeted. We're asking to override our budget by making an amendment. That's the purpose of this.
It was put in the incorrect place.
This money was budgeted for...
Can I see how it was put in the incorrect place?
So is there a line?
Like, if you guys can see it, then I want to see it.
Right now, I cannot. You can, you can, yes, we can find it. This is, these are mistakes that were made. These are, most of these things, the council wanted, say, in, well, not most of them, these right here, before monies were spent and stuff. They've been approved in the budget. They need to be moved from one line to the other line, so we have the authority to spend it.
So part of, part of Rick's motion was to eliminate the $48,000 for the runoff. And I know that to be so because I specifically asked Jared the question when the runoff seemed evident, how are we going to pay for this if that money was eliminated from the budget? And Jared said that it was going to be absorbed by the mayor's office because there were some unfilled positions. Do you recall my conversation with you?
I do recall the conversation. Thank you. Jared Johnson, city attorney. The conversation was exactly what you described, almost. When you asked me that, I told you that I didn't know for sure exactly how that would play out, but my anticipation was that the mayor's office, based on some vacancies, might be able to cover that within their own budget. But I had no authority or ability to say this is exactly how it's going to be.
But that was your answer. That was your, that's 100% what you said to me.
Yeah, and as I said then, it was speculation on my part. I didn't know what the final bill was going to be. I didn't know what the mayor's budget was going to look like.
Right, but my point in talking about that conversation is that that conversation only happened because the money had been eliminated from the budget. So we're not moving that money from Fund 78 to anything. We're overriding our budget with this money because that had been eliminated, eliminated.
This $55,977, we're backing up to the mayor's office, the City Hall runoff number. That was eliminated...
Right.
Because the CFO said that is the proper use of your fund balance and your reserves. And so that would be coming out of reserves. He said there's no reason to budget for that because it will need to come out of reserves. It happens every four years if it happens. And so that would be anticipated to come out of reserves regardless. He said, if you, if you leave it in the mayor's office, it inflates the mayor's office's budget by that much every four years.
I don't recall any of that.
And so that's what...
Do you recall what meeting that was?
That was in the meeting that the mayor and the county and the city staff were instructed by council to have. That's where that was, that meeting was. The $288,000 the council approved in the budget, it was put in Fund 78.
Okay, that $288,000, I'm going to question whether...
That's okay, you can question it. That's where it was.
I'm going to question whether we, as a council and as a city, want to spend $300,000 on a building that we're actively considering vacating and relocating to historic downtown. I was going to say Old Town. So I think we want to consider, do we want to spend $300,000 if we're gonna, if we're seriously talking about leaving this building? I mean, that's not chump change.
I haven't heard any active conversation about leaving this building.
It's part of the plan.
I've seen a long-term plan that may take 20 years to get to, but there's been no conversation. There's been no property inspected. There's been no evaluation of what departments would move or what would happen to this building. We're a long way from that decision.
And in the meantime, we must maintain this facility. We can't just let this, you know, go downhill as long as we're here.
But we don't have a wall there now, so it's not as though we're rehabilitating a current wall. We're actually adding structure.
We're adding a wall...
Not maintenance.
We're adding a wall to our finance department.
Right, right. So what, is this going into the building renovation fund? Or where exactly?
This will, yes, this will go into the building, the building fund and...
Which is what, Fund 76, I think?
Let me find this really quick. It will go into the general fund line item, which is 001, but 300, so it'll be in the building fund so that the building inspector will be running that and be paying for it.
So, so it will be in the, in the building?
It will be to, back to the City Hall budget.
Okay. And tell me that number again, please?
So we're increasing line item 001-0300-416.52-03.
I don't remember saying that we were going to do that. I remember discussing that as a potential use of ARPA/infrastructure money. But I don't recall, I don't recall having a definitive discussion and a vote that that went into the budget as a done deal. That doesn't mean it didn't happen, but I distinctly remember discussing it in terms of the need for privacy, and I don't have any issues with that. But I, I, the conversation that, the detailed conversation that I remember had to do with what remained of the one-point-whatever-it-was first-round COVID-related money, whether that's officially called ARPA or not, I don't know.
I don't know if it's officially called that or not. This was included in the budget as, that was passed. And it was put in the wrong line item by our CFO. And so this is to move that money so it can be spent. And so that's what the $288,000 from Fund 78 is.
So why can't we just approve expenditure out of 78? Or it wasn't put in 78?
Because the council has asked, when it's put, when it's in 78, that gives you the ability to help move it back and forth. If council says, no, we do not want to do any of this, and there's a majority of the council that says we're not going to spend Fund 78, then that's what happens.
Right, but couldn't we do that directly out of 78? We've, I think we voted and approved other set projects.
Not out of Fund 78.
Okay.
Fund 78, did it have a tax basis?
Yes.
It did?
Have a tax base?
No. So what we're doing is we're going to revenues. We're going to, already think, budget is in terms of what we expect to spend, and it generates revenue back to us because of what we have approved.
Fund 78 has historically been the fund that...
But it's not a...
That has historically been a fund that when departments have had a project that did not get accomplished in that year, money was put into Fund 78 so that the council knew when it was going to be spent the next year or the year after that.
So this was in last year's budget, 2021?
This was in 2022's budget. Our CFO put this money in, I don't know how I can say this any different, any clearer. The CFO put this money in Fund 78 so the council would know it was coming out and to do the renovations. That's what he did.
So then why are you calling it a mistake if it was intentional?
Well, because I'm arguing something that he had done, and you're saying, well, was it here or not? This was taxed this year in 2022, put in Fund 78.
Because it's a capital improvement?
We thought that this was put in the line item for City Hall, but it was not. That's why I'm calling it a mistake.
Okay, but it seems to me it makes sense to put a capital improvement in the capital improvement fund. I mean, that makes...
That makes sense.
That's logical.
Perfectly okay. That's where that money's coming from.
I thought we voided that.
Well, we, it was virtually empty, yes. But apparently...
Fund 78 actually was never virtually empty. I don't know where, where that, that notion that it was virtually empty...
Jim said it in a meeting.
And we, we had the numbers. But at any rate, that, that...
It wasn't, though.
That was when excess reserves was being considered kind of under that heading versus Fund 78. And since, I don't, anyway.
Okay. So that's where the money is. That's where it's coming from because we have, we put the money into Fund 78 so that we could do that project in 2022.
Well, I'm, I'm a little concerned because we don't know what healthcare costs are going to do. We don't know...
But we know they're going to go up.
Well, I mean, other than they're going to go up potentially a lot or potentially astronomically. We know that our personnel costs are going to rise by $4 million over the next two to three years. We know that there is an outstanding lawsuit, which I understand our insurers, should we, depending on how that comes out, our insurers will at least cover some of that. But we have to defend it. I'm just concerned because there seem to be, there seem to be some potentially very expensive, unavoidable, important issues coming at us in this next budget round. And we've survived with apparently relatively little distress without this wall, even though I understand the reason for it and don't object, but I just don't know that it's, you know, priority A.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. We're going to move on to the next line item, which is Parks and Recreation, $60,000 from Fund 78. This money has been saved over the last three years. Is that right, John? Three years. $20,000 a year. This is a planned purchase of a gang mower. And so Parks and Recreation have put money in Fund 78 for three years. They're going to pull that out to purchase this gang mower.
What's the current balance in 78? Just out of curiosity.
Current balance in Fund 78 is $3,856,512 and I think 10 cents.
And my understanding is that for some time now, you've been working with departments to collect what they believe...
Yes.
They have in Fund 78? Is that correct, where that would have been parked?
Yep.
And so what do we know about the total outstanding that I'm going to call a debit?
The total amount of dollars, and I don't know an exact dollar amount. I can get that to you in, in, you know, within the week. But the departments have all put in. It's around $2 million.
Okay.
Of what they know. Of the departments that have told me. I'm just throwing a number out there. You write that down and say, well, you said it was 2 million.
No, no, I understand.
It was 1,600. I don't, I don't want to hear, well, you said it was 2 million.
No, no, no.
I'm just saying it's a ballpark figure of about $2 million.
Okay.
But right now, in Fund 78, there's $3,856,512, and I think the cents was 10. I don't know.
Whatever, that's fine. But, but in essence, if it is, give or take, the departmental debit, so to speak, against Fund 78, the roughly $3,856,512 is roughly, give or take, 2 million, then in essence, the actual fund balance in 78 is approximately $1,856,512. So, and of that, of that, of these, approximately 2 million, a portion of that obviously is Parks because they're a department. And I'm guessing, based on your financial report to the advisory committee where you said expenses, your department, Parks and Rec, ran at a, with a surplus of about $100,000, I believe, if memory serves. And, and the gang mower is 60,000. Then in last year's surplus alone, you could cover the cost of the gang mower.
However, he does not have the spending authority to do so.
I understand, but in terms
That's what this is.
Right, but I'm just saying, in terms of sheer dollars, and it, you know, basically even, without even considering Fund seventy-eight and what you have, your department has saved. Last year alone, we know for a fact that you could cover the gang mower with the surplus that the department ran. And I'm just looking for verification that, because then it seems to me there's very little jeopardy in approving this. Because regardless of whether or not we're 100% clear on what the actual balance is in Fund seventy-eight, we know for a fact that your department in '21 ran this surplus that would cover the expenditure that you're requesting. That's all.
Come on, you, come on up here, John, and.
And so I'm just looking for verification that my thinking isn't off here.
Yeah. Good morning, Mayor and Council. John Banks, Parks and Recreation Director. Councilmember Stevens, what you're referring to is our expenditures and revenues presentation that I gave at the Parks and Rec meeting. The Parks Department did under-execute. I, I didn't bring that with me, but I want to say it was in the mid nineties. So there was a little bit of a surplus which would go into fund balance at the end of the year. A lot of that savings was, you know, you've got a combination of part-time staff and, you know, just whatever through the budget. But yeah, technically, I think we under-executed to the tune of, you know, about $100,000, yeah, roughly.
So regardless, there is money in, from, from, to use the, the term that isn't an accounting term, in your department reserve or excess reserve, you know, there is more than enough to cover this.
Well, I mean, we're two different pots, so that, so that savings would go into the general fund reserve, and we're talking about Fund seventy-eight, where, like the mayor had mentioned, over fiscal eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, by council direction, we budgeted twenty grand each year, which was put in seventy-eight
Right.
for that purpose.
But within the general fund, we're talking about making departments whole with what they believe they saved. And so therefore, what I'm saying is whether that money went into the general fund or wherever, what we know is at the end of the day, if you put all the money together, this request is covered. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Josh?
And the one thing that I think is important, every year, your budget has $20,000 allocated towards savings of this gang mower.
Right.
So regardless of whether or not you under-executed $100,000, we have approved taxpayer dollars to be used for this purpose, and to otherwise change that would be to go back on three years' worth of budgeting and deny you the resources needed. So that is put aside and has been designated, saved, and budgeted properly to be executed now that you have over three years saved.
That's correct. Eighteen, nineteen, and twenty.
In his mind, it's that way, Josh, but if you listen to all of our meetings, our CFO at that time said we weren't carrying it forward. So there was no, there's no financial record of that happening. All we have is his historical memory of what happened, and I concur with John. But the accounting principles used here did not preserve those funds. And so technically, while he has done it, we have not allowed for it by the way we kept our financial record.
Which is why I talk about making departments whole. Because all departments were operating under an assumption, an accounting assumption that in fact is not codified and embodied in our accounting system. So, but
I, I think it was, Mayor, I, I don't want to speak out. I think it was occurring because the current balance is 3.8 million and the department heads have brought, I prepared a document,
Right.
you know, chapter and verse on the different divisions and council direction dates.
That's that, give or take, two million.
And all, all of our combined department head exercises came to $2 million, so I, I think it has been occurring, maybe, yeah.
It has been occurring, and that's where we came up with that money.
And that's not, that's not the question on my part. My, my question is making sure that we have enough funding to make the departments whole, even though our, historically, what we thought was happening in our accounting system in fact was not happening.
Yeah, but I, but that's a Fund seventy-eight discussion rather than a general fund discussion.
But that's proven, Chris, by the $2 million that the mayor just talked about.
I'm saying
So, so I don't know why we're sitting here arguing about something we've already proven.
Let's, we've cleared that. Stay there, John.
I'm not aware that I'm arguing, I'm, other than to say, you know, it's covered. I don't have a problem.
It would be helpful had we generated the list that we asked for months ago from all the departments and had that before us today. Because we, we said it would take a, a large effort by our departments to recreate what they expected to be in that fund, and that we should have been appraised of that. And we haven't been. This is the first time we've heard any total come up in terms of the collective amount that the departments came up with.
Now, that, that total was out there last year, but let's, we're going to move on. Let's move on.
It wasn't. No, it wasn't.
I, what's it, the total that we ran for council?
It was there. It was, it was there. He had it there. He didn't have a record of where it went, but the total was there. We will move on. This next one is Parks and Recreation as well. It's $150,000. It is for the second phase of the pool resurfacing. And is that number, that number was from before, last year, when we had the discussion. Is that number still a good number?
Yeah, I think it is. What I did on this calculation is, is kind of a square footage calculation on the, the two pools that were done prior to the 2020 season. And we have less square footage, and I've added kind of a 12, 15% buffer with costs the way they are. So I'm, I'm comfortable that that 150 will get us done for the remainders.
Okay, and it, and we're late in the season, and so we're talking about possibly doing one piece of it before we open and then wait until after to do the second piece hopefully.
I guess after the meeting of the seventeenth, should council approve this, you know, we would, I, I'm going to call the contractor and just kind of see what their availability is. I think we're going to have to split the two projects. There's just not enough time. But we'll do the worst pool, if possible, prior to opening. I don't know if it'll be possible. If it's not, we'll bid both of them and do them right after close.
Okay.
So I have a question. So if fund balance, unless a fund is designated, is synonymous with the term excess reserves, then this 150,000 is against excess reserves, which means it's against that 1,856? Okay.
Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Skylar, you might want to come up here real quick. Public transit is the next one, our rural. Thirty-seven thousand, let me see, thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Do you want to help explain that, that one?
Sure. And I might just add, Skylar Beebe, Public Transit Director, the description that's in our third item for the 55,000 is kind of the same description for this item as well because of inflation, so just to get that out there. So, so for our 55,000
So you're going to jump to the fifty-five?
Sorry, thirty-seven, five.
Thirty-seven.
So the thirty-seven, five thousand, thirty-five, thirty-seven, five, there we go. This is for our rural program. Normally, we would anticipate a five to six percent increase in inflation. With pandemic, we are now doubled that. This last year alone, we saw four increases from our vendors. It's, it's, it's just been a wild road for us. But with this funding, this is what will allow us to, to increase the amount that's already been budgeted for this year. We're hopeful that these buses would be delivered this year. But even that's up in the air right now, and it could be next year. So we may be coming to council for next year's budget to, to move this again to a following year. So this would just be that increase to cover the inflation.
But this, but the rural fund doesn't impact Pocatello taxpayers, as I understand it, so so that, I mean, I think it's just important for folks to understand that the rural program pays for itself, and so this amount is coming out of that fund.
Correct. And, and to be more clarifying, that's our Fund Eight, which is our rural program separate from city funds. Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Then we've got your, next one is a $36,000 expense for ADA bus shelters.
Yes, and council may recall this from last year. This was a project that we anticipated having completed, but there was delays between the Federal Transit Administration and as well as the state with getting the funding agreement finalized, which inadvertently stopped us from being able to get it completed. And so these are three bus shelters that will be, being replaced. Again, no city match would be used for this, no city funds, because the, the match money is being covered by the Pocatello Housing Authority and also the Pocatello Rotary.
The Gate City Rotary.
Or the Gate City Rotary, sorry.
Okay, and, and that was budgeted last year and just needs to move on because we didn't
Correct. And we have received those funding, that funding agreement now, so just as soon as this is approved, we'd be looking at doing this in the fall. Or, sorry, the spring.
The spring, okay. Sounds good. And then $55,000. Looks like this was for, this is for three buses.
Yeah, so this is the same as the rural buses. This, and, so this was for three buses, and that's why it's a little bit more to help cover the inflation. And the, the amount that we, the increase we'd be seeing in that match is coming, and I'm glad to say we're not part of Fund seventy-eight anymore. We were, we did get that resolved. For our department, Fund seventy-eight was always just kind of a placeholder because of the federal rules. But we were able to identify a line in our Fund Nine program where we could put our match, which is essentially developed through our advertising that you'll see on the buses and that. So we have just over, well, don't quote me, but it's just over $230,000 that we have that have built up for purposes like this.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Then Hannah, you're up next. We've got, and in fact, I believe, Hannah, if, correct me if I'm wrong, all three of these have been in front of the council in the la, well, and within this calendar year, I believe, maybe last December.
Yeah, the, so the first one is $70,000, so that was in, for the council in January for a grant. So we've got the money. And it should be executed in February. And that's for the fuel reduction Russian olive removal up City Creek. There'll be another one coming for that, because I just got another $60,000 for that, so. The 240,000 is for the East Bench Fuel Reduction Project. We haven't started that. And then the Centennial Park Design was in my budget for last year. We didn't expend it, so it's just back in again. So. These fuel grants will be, I'm going to work to get them in my budget now, but we'll I expect additional budget amendments just because of the nature of the grants, is they're going to carry over fiscal years, so.
When do you anticipate the East Bench project, you said it hasn't started?
I am hoping to get an RFS out in this month, later this month. So we would start it this spring. I don't think we'll finish it this spring. And that will, we'll finish it next year, so that $240,000 will probably go into next fiscal year, but since I've just executed a contract for $60,000, it will hopefully wash out.
Okay. Thank you. The next one is water. Council, you've approved this. The council approved this. So you have two here. Let me just clarify this. We have two things here. They are the same truck, so you'll see the first one, the, the $209,000 drop-off. The $210,000 will be what the budget amendment is. Council approved this February 18, 2021, and we were just not able to get the truck in 2021. So this is a carryover that we've, we've had, and it's, it's scheduled to be paid for.
So, so it's been ordered, and we're just now taking delivery, or has it been ordered?
Yeah, so Justin Armstrong, Water Superintendent, so. Yes, we're still waiting on the truck. The truck was originally scheduled to arrive in September. We noted that at that time that we weren't going to receive the, the truck by the end of, of the fiscal year. They were having challenges with chip for the ABS system, and so it's amazing, you know, how, how something so small can hold up something so large. But unfortunately, the truck has moved off the line. It is now at the outfitter at this time. And as the mayor described, number 12 and 13 are one in the same. So we are actually requesting the use of fund line that was appropriated for ERT meter upgrades. That was a placeholder in there that was, was a remnant of the previous year. But there is enough within that fund line. It was originally budgeted at 232,000. The truck minus the trade is 210,660, and we approved that bid in, on February 18.
So we've been using the trade in the meantime? Did they get it?
We, we're currently still using that, that other crane that we were looking to potentially trade. Our street department has contacted us and are looking at that opportunity to utilize it within their operations because they have an older model. And so we decided to forego the approval of the trade-in for the 1,500 amount.
Okay. Other questions for Justin? Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
All right, wastewater control. He's already on his way up here. This is, what happened here? The first one we have is for engineering fees of $1,463,500.
Can you just, I just don't understand what engineering fees for debt service payment means. Could you just explain what that means?
Levi Adams, Superintendent WPC. Yeah, the notes on it were a little confusing. When we brought you the, the contract with Keller and StanTech, it was for the 1.4 million. What we've done is we've taken capacity fees, transferred that over into our debt service account, and paid that. That's the 3.1 million, which is the next one on that. That's why they, it's kind of confusing. So then we were able to use the X, or I shouldn't say the excess, the money that we had originally got permission to spend, that would have paid the debt service payment to pay for the fees for the engineering services. Yes. We took money out of savings, we paid this one, paid our bill, and then the money in our, our regular spending account, we have the bill, the bill to lead to spend.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I, I thought and thought and thought and decided I couldn't figure it out. Hope that helped. Okay. I also have a question. Is, none of this involves the, the new building that you proposed?
No, none of this involves a new building. We're bringing the, to you next Thursday at the regular council meeting.
Oh, all right, good, because, because what I wasn't clear about was that that money already, has already been collected in fees. We weren't talking about a new, so I'm glad it's coming forward. Thank you.
Okay, the next line of 748, $748,464.
That was a construction project to upgrade the Whitman Lift Station. It was budgeted for in FY21. The design was done in-house. It took a little bit longer than we expected, so the project actually wasn't bid out until 2022. You guys did approve that project, and that's, so it's just the authority to spend the money that we had already budgeted for in '21.
And then the next one, $133,000, was also approved in 2021. We ran into the same problem Justin did, and you couldn't get the truck in.
Same problem that I think a lot of people have, just can't get them, can't get them in in that tight timeframe.
Yep, and so council, that is the
Got one more.
What one do we have?
Thirty-one, $3,100,000.
Oh, the $3,100,000 is what Levi had talked about first with the, the transfer, but you can repeat that.
Yeah, so we, we have the funds available in our capacity fee funds. And so we're transferring, we have the, asking for the authority to transfer that out of that and put it into the debt service fund to make our debt service payment.
And that, that fund has $4,773,547 in it.
And, and the reason you're doing this is because capacity fees are very restricted in what they can do, right?
Correct, right, we can't just use it for general spending.
So we have to, we have to apply them very narrowly to meet the onus of state requirements.
And before we, we did this, we did have the, we did have a discussion with our former CFO, and he agreed that this was appropriate to use the funds for this.
Thank you. Okay, council, that's the, the amendment that you will see on the Okay, council, that's the, the amendment that you will see on the agenda next week.
So what about the 20,000 for new office furniture?
The, we talked about that, the building departments.
No, we didn't talk about that.
We, well, we did, but we can do it again. The building department has renovated and moved so that we could create the space we need. And they've moved to the, building department's moving to the back of the building. And the 20,000 is for furniture, equipment, desks, cabinets, and all of that stuff that they're needed to do that.
So furniture typically, I mean, desks and chairs can be moved. So we're actually talking about.
Unfortunately, most of the desks and stuff that we have can't be moved because they're all on the modular.
I understand.
Things, and they, they can't.
Understood.
Be moved.
Perfect.
And so that's why you've seen.
All right.
A number of those things.
Why furniture is included.
And so, yes.
Thank you.
And so that is the, the budget amendments that we will see. Minus the $209,000, I think it was number 12, because that and 12 and 13 are the same in there. And that's with the water department, and that, that's the same truck that we talked about. Okay, so next week we will have a public hearing. After that public hearing, we'll have, I believe, Jared, if you can help me with this. After the public hearing, we will have an ordinance prepared and for the council to consider as well.
Yeah, we'll make sure that happens.
And so, so we'll go there, and then we can execute the things that we need to do there. So. Okay, thank you. Council, thank you for that. With that, then, we are adjourned from this meeting.